podium and call me if you can hear me, okay? John, can you hear me? John?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
No, the volume's all the way up.
Do you hear it?
Yeah, I can hear it, but I wish it was a little louder.
This one?
Yeah. Just not, maybe just move it a little closer.
It's all the way up, yeah.
Yeah, just move it a little bit.
Light it up.
Thank you.
You're set up with this, um, you're set up with that, you're here?
No, 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 I remember it doesn't work.
Oh.
Even, yeah, I remember it, I thought it took like five minutes, and then when the meeting started, it would just be back.
Oh, my God.
I'll be okay.
All right, um, so it is seven o'clock, seven, oh, two. I'm gonna call this meeting, the town commissioners to order at seven oh two, please. All right, so, Ja- John, if you can do a roll call, and we can have the audience members be quiet while, um, this is going on, that would be helpful, thank you.
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Duckett.
Here.
Commissioner Hansett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
I'm here.
Town administrator, Carl Snyder.
Here.
Police chief, David Burst. Public works director, Don Albahn.
Here.
Town clerk, John Hudson, here.
Okay, we will now rise to the pledge of allegiance. At pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic, which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to the review of the agenda.
All right.
John, do you have slides it too?
What was that?
Did you want to put the slide as well, or?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Remembering that.
Well, I'll start with this one, and then it moves to the other one. Okay, so we have one called order. Two, roll call, three pledge of allegiance. Four, review of agenda. Five, public comment period, resident may comment once for general public comment either before or after business agenda. Six, consent agenda. Minute, meeting minutes. B, finance, financial report. C, public safety report. D, public works report. E, administrative report. Moving on, we'll do the reports from the staff and committee reports. We got arts council, cert, events, green, green well, historical and sustainable community. Then we'll have the commissioner reports. And then, of course, we have our business, which is going to be town tax rate and budget comment period. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four, economic development work group, board vote. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five, P A M C trail design, board vote. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one, budget amendment, board vote. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two, elections, board vote. Government relations firm, R F P, board vote. Arts council and events committee, events, board vote. And opioid sentiment participation, board vote. Then following that, we will have the administrative updates, public comments, or any items not necessarily on the immediate agenda. Preliminary approval of next meeting agenda, and a motion to go into closed session.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Here, John, we'll get started, and I'll just take a minute to explain this public comment period. Um, we are providing two public comment periods of your choice. So you can choose to provide your public comment now before the meeting starts, or provide your comment at the end of the meeting. This is because we had a resident who came last time, and they wanted to share their comment, and it was unclear if they wanted to stay for the whole meeting, or just share their comment and go home. So it's just, so to accommodate people who want to tell us something, and get to making dinner for their kids, or whatever it is, you can comment before the meeting, or after. Anyone have a comment, either online or in person, at this time, if you're in person, just line up at the podium. If you are online, please raise your hand. John, do we have any online hands raised?
I do not see any online.
Okay, all right, then we will move into the consent agenda. Are there any comments, questions about the consent agenda, or is there a motion to approve? There a second?
Second.
Um, John, do you want to call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert. Commissioner Colbert. Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
We'll move on to committee reports. Um. Duckett, do you want to do arts, or do you want?
No, John, can, I mean, Kyle, if you do that honestly.
Sure, um, we have a meeting on Monday, um, and they're looking to plan with the board to discuss some of the events later in the agenda. Um, one for a pop-up art, um, that's one, and another one for a food tasting. Other than that, I don't think there's any.
Or are they coming with their bylaws?
They're coming along, and they also have a budget they're working on bylaws.
Okay, just want to make sure that's up, yes.
That is an act.
Sure.
Yeah, for the month of February, uh, between training and outreach, stuff served at a total of one hundred and fifty-three.
Thank you. Events committee, Commissioner.
Yes, uh, good evening, um, we are still working on, uh, the community events, um, that we want to bring to the town for the children of Upper Marlboro and their families. Um, I'll have more information, uh, next month, thank you.
Um, Green Team, Commissioner Hansett.
Uh, we had a couple planting, uh, meetings in the last couple of weeks, and we are, just got some new seeds in, and we will be, uh, meeting next week, uh, hopefully with better weather, and getting some more planting and the garden cleaned up. Other than that, that's it for now, thank you.
Um, Greenwell Consulting, um, yeah, I don't, their meeting got pushed today because the capital budget got released, and they are looking for, um, what's in there and what's not, so we don't really have a full report, except for they've been following our bond bill, they've been helping work, work through the county, and getting things out of the county, um, for um, historical committee, um, I will do that one. Um, they had their meeting on, first meeting on Saturday with the new board. Um, they discussed how to do outreach to, um, youth engagement and engaging all of the community. Uh, so that was kind of a big topic for them, was how to get more people involved and interested, so they're gonna, um, put together some copy information, and we'll start putting that out on social media for them. And they're planning to participate in Marlboro Day. And we'll go on to sustainable communities, uh, Commissioner Colbert.
Um, sure, so we'll be voting later in the agenda on a legislation transforming the sustainable communities, working even draft on what that is, so we'll discuss that later, and we've had a couple of, uh, names come from different places, and also two will be
We'll move on to commissioner reports, then. Um, so I will start off the biggest. Most of my time this month has been spent door knocking on every door in Upper Marlboro, so you either saw me in person, got a message on your ring camera, or just got something left at your door. Commissioners Colbert, Hansett, and Lot came out with me, and it was fun times when we did it. Um, and, um, there are a list of items that residents told me about, and I am working through them, following up on each item. Um, also been in the annexation area, door knocking, and working through annexation negotiations, um, with property owners. Um, making phone calls to our legislators, making sure that, you know, Upper Marlboro is still in every, top of everyone's mind in the nucleus of the county. Um, we had, um, unity meetings with our economic development firm, we had a virtual one that was attended by staff and a few commissioners, so we recorded that, and went through that, and put that online. Then we had a really well-attended in-person meeting, um, and that went really, really well. Um, I've also attended meetings with D C A O McCarthy about D P I and other government services at the county level. Um, a meeting with M S D P T C, experience for insurance in the county to discuss the entertainment act, which we'll talk about when we get to the budget next time. Um, a meeting with county executive regarding county budget, um, and all the municipalities in French George County. Uh, employ French Georges to talk about economic development and hiring. Um, met with Office of Central Services to discuss the surplus property list and the county property in town. Um, and we had a business meeting in Old Mill Road, uh, Business Park, to talk about security and anything else that was kind of top of their minds. Um, and then, other than that, kind of, oh, well, sorry, Commissioner Duckett, you have one immediate, the employee survey is out, that's due back on the thirty-first, and so I expect the results to be collated within two weeks of that. Um, and then, last thing is just kind of working with staff, department heads, on getting a budget for you guys, that has everything in it, so next time we can go through that and make the decisions afterwards.
Um, so for me, I'll work backwards here, so today was the last day of a conference I have attended over advocacy for municipalities and finding funding, uh, grant funding at the federal level. Had the opportunity with Senator Van Hollen and his legislative director, as well as Senator Carden's legislative director, to talk about things like, uh, the need for more ARPA funding, and safe streets for all, you know, transportation, infrastructure, government block grants, and all those things, and trying to hopefully raise our name a little bit higher, uh, on that list as well. Um, also did some door knocking in the town, in both Spring Ranch and Marl, in Marlboro Town, as well as in the annexation area, and had a couple of thoughts on some ways we can make, uh, the idea of annexation a little bit more digestible for folks to grasp and really know what we, as the town, can provide. Also attended the county executive budget meeting with British County Municipal Association, as well as the deputy chief administrative officers meeting, focused on the Department of Permitting, Inspection, and I think it's environment evaluation, one of the Um, as I mentioned earlier, I had a few meetings on, uh, this, this transformation of S C W G into this new economic work group meeting, so And did freshman congressman Glenn Ivy's open house earlier in the month, he's not our representative, but his district orders the town, uh, and as we're looking at annexation, some of those areas in his districts, and just trying to keep our name in his, his, uh, mind as well. Tended Better Cities virtual, uh, community meeting, uh, listened to a lot of the ideas that they had there, and on the more fun side, had the opportunity to patron the new Little Minor Taco Truck that came to town, so hopefully we'll get some more of those opportunities coming, and all of this while celebrating a two-year-old birthday this month, so.
Okay, I know it's big today, thank you.
Uh, I'm happy to report that the Oak Crane Highway crosswalk was painted, thank you to the highway department for getting that done, and help from the mayor for pushing to get it done, uh, that's nice to have. Uh, I attended the Employee Print Jump, uh, Print George County, uh, meeting for, it's about employment related to economic development. Uh, I did a couple weekends with the mayor, and a couple commissioners, and we did door-to-door, uh, I did it for two weekends. Uh, I attended the online forum and the in-person forum, uh, with Better City for, uh, rebranding, that's it, thank you.
Hello, so I, um, I attended the P G, P G C M A, uh, Montgomery chapter of the M M L joint lunch reception. Um, I also, uh, knocked on a couple of doors with, um, Commissioner, um, Colbert, and then, um, with Hatchet and Mayor Franklin. Um, I also attended the in-town, um, rebranding meeting, town hall, thank you.
We'll move on to business. Administratively, if you are online during business item and have a comment, please raise your hand. If you're in person and have a comment, please come to the floor, and we will get everyone there in three minutes. So the first, what are our business, discount, tax rate, budget, and comment period? Administrator Snyder, do you want to kind of give us an overview?
Absolutely, uh, the board discussed this over the past couple months, um, as everyone may be aware, that a couple years ago, the board resolution for a second access from the board, so this chart up here is following that. Um, of course, the resolution of the past is not binding, so that's a B go-through every year to Also, as you can see, there's proposed at twice, tax rates, the difference, and then also the, um, anticipated amount of total tax and town tax being paid on property on two, just to help, to help reference.
So commissioners have comments or questions? Go ahead, and we'll let the public, and this is mostly to let the public tell us their thoughts on it. Commissioners.
I will say, um, just to place on the record, I understand this was a resolution passed, uh, during prior boards, and I still am of the mind at, um, in looking at our revenue streams, to be working on the, the revenue stream, as opposed to going toward tax increases, particularly residential tax increases, without necessarily exhausting all options in terms of finding where grant funding is, finding where many, uh, state, county, federal buckets are, in order for us to tap into that. So we look after that, I think that tax rates or tax rate increases should be overall the priority, but I understand those are things that we're doing now, uh, our lobbyists with their efforts that were being pursued fleshed out and exhausted fully.
I would like to also put on bracket that, um, I'm not in favor of the tax increase. I don't want to pay more taxes, and I'm sure other residents feel the same way. I know we like to, uh, use the money towards, uh, rebranding the town and some other efforts, but I really think that we should exhaust other options before we, um, before we raise taxes.
But I just want to give a little kind of background on this, is that, um, three years ago, the board looked at the increases in prices and salaries and whatnot, and the fact that we had the lowest municipal tax rate of any municipality, but, but many municipalities without police departments had higher tax rates than us. So what we looked at was a sustainability of, can we, can we keep providing these services as the prices increase without having increased taxes? And at that time, we said we need to go after more grant funding, we need to go after more federal, et cetera, um, but we also need to look at raising the tax rate, and we targeted the tax rate point three eight. So thirty-eight cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, and at the time, it was COVID, so we decided to step that over three years, so it wouldn't be too much of a weight on everyone. Um, so that is why this was put, how it, it, it was. I do have a chart, as Commissioner Colbert asked for a few meetings ago, for us to, to look at at the next meeting, when we're really digging through the budget, and see, you know, what that difference has made, um, but, you know, trash, which is getting more expensive, salaries have to go up as we, our staff becomes more knowledgeable, um, and we bring on more staff. So that is really what that was meant to express. I don't want to pay more taxes either, I know that it's costing more money to pick up and
That's true, so, so as far as, um, and salary increases, um, are we gonna vote, or are we gonna look at salaries and see how we can?
So salaries are, are monitored by the personnel ordinance, and the topic of, our closed session tonight is to just review those, but the way salary increases go is established in ordinance, I think that was four or five years ago. Um, so we'll, and the board will talk about that, because it's individual personnel. Do we have any hands online, John?
We do not, as of right now.
Brian's gonna go, okay.
Brian, how about Church Street? Um, just one
Hold on one second, Brian. John, can you hear Brian?
I can, yeah.
Just quick, um, I'm sort of against tax, too, I know this is sort of a beta complete, because we discussed it a few years ago, or whatever, but when things change, maybe you would relook at them. One of the things that's changed, we've gotten some red light revenue, instead of getting in a, we, a police officer, use that red light revenue to bolt back into the police department of public safety. And that way, you can still maintain the services you have, but take advantage of the things that we didn't have a year ago, effectively going from zero to a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars a point budget, that's it.
Um, there are no other public comments, so I'm gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the resolution twenty twenty-three dash four, economic development work group. Um, do you want to introduce?
I'll give you the back three for you.
All right, thank you, John.
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four, session regular town meeting, introduced February the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, date March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Resolution by the Board of Town Commissioners to establish, improve, and maintain an Upper Marlboro Economic Development Work Group, E U M E D W.
So the board's talked about this a few times, I think of, I'm sure Colbert maybe, or the mayor maybe introduced some changes to what's in the package, yeah?
I have suggested changes.
Suggested changes, um, by establishing the, uh, Upper Marlboro Economic Development Work Group, um, gives them the authority, um, that, um, the sustainable community didn't have before, um, moving forward, and it, uh, also gives them the power to start looking toward a larger, like, economic development corporation, not profits, as, as town redeveloped.
There were a few grammatical changes that I just picked on, um, but I have two other recommended changes, and I need the legislation seen by another commissioner, and then one that I need to talk, so I'm gonna kind of put them forward now, and see what you guys think. Um, and the first is that, top of page two, or page eleven, whichever one you're looking at, um, it says that the work, work group will be made up of five members. Um, just because sometimes we have a difficulty recruiting volunteers for things, I think it might be considered, that we made up either three or that way, you know, if there's a dearth of volunteers, we have three, if there's enough volunteers for five, then we have five. That's the first recommendation, then my second recommendation is add to the very bottom a number of seven, and just that the work group remains compliant with town legislation regarding committees. So that, it kind of, that one ordinance we have that we just passed twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, um, that, so that the work group would have to comply with the same rules as any other committee, um, of the town.
Question, wouldn't we be, um, in violation of the open meetings act, if having three people?
Um, only if two of those people chatting with each other about the work group outside of an open meeting. Most of our committees have three members.
But you said commissioners, didn't you?
Oh, they're appointed by the Board of Town Commissioners, so it's, it's, the makeup is a town resident, a property owner who owns commercially zoned property, a business owner, um, a standing county commissioner, and, um, another stakeholder in that area, so sometimes you might have a business owner who's also a resident, right, and if you are having trouble getting five volunteers, then maybe three is enough, do you see what I'm saying? Because we, we have had the problem of getting enough volunteers for that, and this doesn't mean it's only, it means we have the option of doing three, we don't always have to do five, so that was why I recommend, but, you guys don't
Just in case.
Um, I'm thinking three, two, five, is that the way you're trying to? Not three or five, but three, two, five.
The only problem is if we have four, and then, and they're voting on something, they don't have a person to break
So are you saying five or three?
Yeah, it would have to be an odd number.
So three is an odd number, um, so I'm just saying, is it, are you gonna say three, two, five, or are you just gonna say?
Three, four, five.
Three or five.
Right.
Okay.
And so we're okay with those changes?
I'm fine with, uh, three or five, as long as, I mean, we have the language in here that has to be of this
Commissioners have no more comments, we'll go to public comment. Um, John, I'm gonna let Evelyn, who is in the room, speak first, and then if anyone's online, let me know, okay?
Will do.
Good afternoon, everyone, uh, we signed this, the changes, I, I'm a little confused anymore, suddenly, so, three to five is fine. However, as you said, you know, we have a hard time getting, you know, volunteers, because that's always been the case, and I'm sure that we're not making Uh, I thought that we had, uh, talked to Charles about allowing us to have four than one resident, so right now, we're still needing one current town resident, one property owner, one business owner, one standing town commissioner, and then one additional stakeholder, so it does know, it just allows us to have one resident, I think if we were more open to having more than one resident, we may get more volunteers. And I, and am I wrong, Kyle, and you just
Yeah, you should respond, because this is your legislation.
No, you're, you're absolutely right, I think what we discussed was that last bullet point there, the one additional stakeholder, we left that a little bit broader, that it could encompass, you know, another town resident, or someone right outside of the town, I mean, just, you know, just to leave that kind of, be able to, that it was not limiting one and only one town resident, I mean, any of the individuals, the property owner, business owner, could also be a town resident, then additional members outside of the board, commissioner, additional members outside of the board will also potentially be people who have interest in the town.
But I thought we were gonna make it more clearer about the fact that we could, you know, have another resident, because this is still an additional stakeholder, but that language that would, uh, show that town residents are not limited to one, town's not limited to one town resident, and I may be, you know, sick of that, but I just feel like the property owners, very few property owners, uh, are residents of town, that is not simple. Uh, one, one business owner, same thing, you know, we, we add, again, I could be more petty about this, but should, shouldn't we think about some language that would give people the opportunity to know that it's just not one current resident?
Um, can I make a suggestion? I just say, instead of the, the bottom bullet, instead it could say, one additional member in compliance with town committee regulations, because the town committee regulations allow it to be like a resident, or a business owner, or, so then, that way, it could just easily be a resident, and it's clear in those, the twenty, twenty twenty-two dash oh eight is clear.
So, following the twenty twenty-two old date, that line is what you're saying?
Then, one other suggestion I would make is, um, in the line right above the category, the work director shall be made up of the board director shall be made up of, I would say, something in there that says at least one of these, one of each of these. So it's not limiting it, so it's clear it's not limiting it to only one town resident or anything, but at least one.
Okay, I like that. That sounds good. Because that does give more clearance than it can be more than one town resident.
At least, yeah.
Okay. That's definitely my, what I see right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, is there any online comment?
There are not.
I'm gonna phrase this motion so we can get the changes into it. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-04 Economic Development Workgroup? The change that shall be made up of either three or five board members? And that it shall also be made up of at least one of the below category of members? And that it shall, that the work group shall remain compliant with town legislation regarding committees?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All right. President Franklin.
Call the roll.
Yep. President Franklin.
Hi.
Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Bye.
Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Resolution 2023-05 PAMC Trail Design.
All right.
Can you read it into the record?
Resolution 2023-05 Session Regular Town Meeting. Date March 28th, 2023. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Upper Marlboro to approve an application for a planning assistance to municipalities and communities, PAMC, grant offered by the Prince George's County Planning Department to provide technical, to conduct a feasibility study and preliminary designs of a segment of the Chesapeake Beach Railroad Trail.
Board just talked about this for a couple months now. So we're working with park and planning to get funding to secure contractors to conduct the feasibility study of the trail between Olprin Highway and Maryland 725, figure out property owners we have to involve, the feasibility of installing it, and some basic construction designs, so that we have a document that we can take to go apply for grants. Because right now we have some grants, but we don't know if it's feasible or how much app all we're gonna need to pay it and whatnot moving forward. So this enabling Revolution to allow those to form.
Have any question? If public has a comment, they can come up. John, is there anyone online?
I have no one online.
Brian Calabot, Church Street. Due to his property purchase in your major projects underway, and points of interest right across the road here, I noticed he said between segment Olprin and 725, that segment then goes to Route 4, at which point it's sort of dead end. Is there any intention, I mean, I'm not allowed to really ask questions, but is it dead end?
Are you gonna expand?
We were, we were gonna expand it with park and planning with the contractor. Because nothing's set right now for that purchase or us or.
Understood. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-05 PAMC Trail Design?
So moved.
There's a second?
Yes, sir.
John, will you call the roll, please?
Yep. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanceit.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We'll move on to Ordinance 2023-01 Budget Amendment. John, if you can read that.
Will do. Ordinance 2023-01 Session Regular Town Meeting Introduced February the 28th, 2023. Date enacted would be March 28th, 2023. An ordinance relating to adopting and approving budget amendments for the fiscal year 2023 budget.
This is our mid-year budget adjustment and provides a, I'd like a chance to see where we are. This is only through January 2023, so these are our current numbers, especially in the attachment starting in page 19 moving forward. That is just kind of a reference, so residents can see where some of the funding can be moved. It's kind of hard to break out because we're adding our meter or speed camera revenues in. So once we are able, once this is passed, we're able to finalize the line item, we'll see a much clearer version of that. But that's just almost a draft and a reference for residents to see the figures on page 17. Page 16, 17 are the actual budget numbers, where you can see we're adding additional funding to the season residence program.
Does anyone have any question?
There's no comment online.
John, do you have any?
No one online.
No comment. Okay. I don't see any comments from them. So is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2023-01 Budget Amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will you call the roll, please, John?
Will do. President Franklin. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert. Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanceit.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Ordinance 2023-02 Election. And will you read it in, and then I think you're also the one to intro?
Will do. Ordinance 2023-02 Session Regular Town Meeting Introduced February 28th, 2023. Date enacted would be tonight, March 28th, 2023, if approved. An ordinance to regulate and provide for the conduct of voter registration, maintenance of record, conduct and election certification of election results, and penalties related thereto, and generally relating to town elections. This ordinance was put into place, meeting with the Board of Supervisors of Elections, as well as taking feedback from the town attorney, as well as with other constituents and residents in the town. We have looked this over and provided to basically update the elections ordinance for the upcoming election in November, so that we have things ready to go once the election gets called. So there's a fair summary.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions? Look online, John, but Joe Merkle is standing up, so we're gonna let him.
Joe Merkle, Longborough Pike. For those who aren't aware, I've been a town election judge now for, I think, eight elections. I'm also a chief judge for the county. Do you think, I suspect that this was copied from some other municipality and brought into the whole. One, the hours of the polls changed. I don't know if that was intentional. They had previously been 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. They are now listed as 8:00 PM to 7:00 PM, so two hours shorter. I don't know if that gives people time to get to DC, you know, come in before work and get to DC or come afterwards. It uses shall a lot, and our town attorney has informed us that shall means you don't really have to do it. So, you know, there's only a few cases of must in there, and so those are the only ones that the penalty might actually apply to. I stated multiple times that I think that provisional voting is a mess, and the town elections are Tuesday, and that it has to be certified by Thursday at noon. You basically have one day to try to cure ballots, and there's no information about how we are actually expected to do that. Also, something that the Board of Supervisors have been trying to work on was how do you handle ineligible winners? If there's a write-in and someone refuses, or if some, if the, one of the Board of Supervisors gets written in and wins, they are ineligible, that would trigger a special election. I think something needs to be done about that. Absentee ballots are now counted after the polls close, or they're, they're not even open until after the polls close, which means that we, when we have 25 some absentees like the last time, we've got to go through and look at all the signatures and do that, and we can't do that until the end of the election. In the past, we've done that in the last hour of the election, so we don't waste everyone's time to come in and try to observe the voting. There's also nothing who actually sets the date of the special election, and that has been an issue before. Who is responsible for that, because it is required to be 30 to 45 days from the vacancy? Thank you.
John, I know you discussed this with the Board of Supervisors of Elections. Does any of that fall outside of the conversations you had with them that we should be concerned about?
They, they, why the polls times were changed, make everyone aware, is because they did an assessment of the times when people came to the polls, and it was the times that the adjustment was made because there was no one coming to vote during that time, and it would be better to allow the polls to open a little bit later and to close, you know, because that's why the poll hours were changed. And the Board of Supervisors of Elections said that that seemed, that seemed reasonable. I mean, we're.
Do the commissioners have any? Yeah. I'm sorry, we just have one, the one comment here. So the, does the commissioners have any questions about any needs for the?
Well, some of the, I do have questions. John, I'm wondering, like, some of the considerations, some of the things that were just brought up are interesting to me. So I'm wondering to, just want to make sure that he mentioned quite a few things that were not already addressed. So can you clarify some of that?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we can go back and revisit if we need to. I mean, I'm happy to go back and revisit it. That's not an issue. I mean, but.
I'm just gonna kind of. I wrote down all the comments, so I'm gonna change them. So there's the shall may, but the attorney has reviewed this, so we're gonna defer to him on that.
Right, and he did, he did.
Provisional voting.
So.
Yeah, and the provisional voting is something that the Board of Supervisors discussed. We did talk about ineligible winners, kind of, or not ineligible winners, but unwilling winners at the last work session, and decided not to make any changes at that time. Absentee ballot opening, you know, the Board of, the Board of Supervisors was okay with that?
They read this over, and they said that they didn't have any changes they wanted to make to the document. We went through it each piece, and everyone said that they were fine with it. So that's why it's been put forth before you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have one, another resident comment. Go ahead, sorry.
From Calacott, Old Church Street. Most of the early voting that was being done was mostly by the employees and by the actual supervisors that were there, that were doing their voting at the beginning. If you're changing it to seven in the morning, we're moving backward on that? Is that what I'm hearing?
What was the time again? Eight?
We're moving it to eight, and then to seven?
No, it's, it's, it was 7:00 AM, it's now 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM. Taking those times into consideration, please.
Do any of us want to make any changes to this?
I will say, I have heard from residents that they would wish that it were open earlier so that they could vote before they went to work, because it's not easy to get here with whether it's traffic, whatever the issue way, situation is, to vote before the polls close. So I've always heard that we should have it earlier, because people want to stop by. I have two residents in the neighborhood that have asked me about that.
Yes, I think you and I had that feedback, and that's, we asked them to move it to the seven o'clock, and so that was moved to the seven o'clock for the last election. And John, I think the Board of Supervisors then kind of evaluated and found that, no, when I come before eight o'clock, is that accurate?
That is correct. We did an assessment. We broke down the amount of people that came during the, all the hours, that we could assess where the numbers, where people were coming from. And no one really, as Patty has pointed out, people, most people that came that morning are basically the employees or the people that were working the polls. I mean, that was basically what we had for the first hour.
So can you tell me, was the assessment done just solely on the last election or multiple elections?
It was done on the last, I want to say the last two, because we had a special election, of course, for Commissioner Colbert, and then, of course, we had the regular election. So the assessment was.
Prior to those two, it had been? Right, prior to those two, it had been eight o'clock?
Prior to those, it had been like 1:00 PM. It was like noon or something like that.
So, okay, so hold on, because we've got to keep this with the commissioners, okay? So even though we had gotten that feedback from the residents and we had made the adjustment, it sounds like the residents didn't use that. So one of the kind of compromises I made with town staff was like, okay, I hear what the Board of Commissioners or Supervisors of Elections is saying, but let's make sure that in future we're always sending every household an absentee ballot application and making that process easy for them, so that if, you know, they were thinking, oh, I might come if it was open earlier, but they're not actually coming, they now have, they can do absentee from their home, and then that way, that makes sure that we're not cutting people out from that.
So if it's, so just to, so if it's 7:00 AM, when you said the staff, so, I mean, who is it inconveniencing if it's open at 7:00 AM?
The staff, when they say staff, they're referring to the Board of Supervisors of Elections, because their town staff aren't.
I mean, I don't know that it's inconveniencing them. I would like to know if that's an inconvenience for them.
Yes, so the Board of Supervisors of Elections expressed a preference for having a shorter day, and since the data supported that, and they are the ones running the election.
I remember it was a long day for them, and I think if we're shortening it by an hour or two, we still have absentee ballots. I don't see an issue with that. If you can't make it in the morning, get it in the mail, so.
Well, I don't like that, I do. I don't like, I know when I wasn't a commissioner, I know I looked forward to coming in the morning before I went to work, even when I do my regular elections for the president or whoever, I go before work, because once I get to work, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get open time, and I prefer not to have an absentee ballot.
The only elections where it was this time was the election that yourself, Tommy, Commissioner Duck, I'm sorry, Janet and myself were elected, and then the special election in control. Those are the only two elections where seven o'clock was the start time. So prior to that, the start time was later in the day, and so we moved it in response to this request, but then the time is not being used in our Board of Supervisors of Elections. Our volunteers paid volunteers, the volunteers, and I think it's respectful of their time to say, if you're gonna get up at 5:00 AM, right, and sit here for nobody to show up, let's just make sure that people have the absentee option. And, you know, because you guys are the ones doing this work, we're going to look at the data, which shows that no one's using this thing we created, and kind of defer to your decision as long as it's within reason.
Ideally, somebody go to work at 7:00 or 8:00 AM, should be able to get here by 6:00 or 7:00.
Well, the polls, the polls are open until eight. Oh, hold on a second. Let's finish this, and then I'll take the public comment again, because we're kind of back and forth. Does anyone else have comments on the time? All right, let me, sorry. All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Everything that has been discussed, all of my concerns have been answered. So I don't have any more to say, other than the fact that, yes, we've only done this twice where we had the polls open to, really, seven o'clock. All the years that I've been here, and making elections, it's been later in the afternoon at seven o'clock. By just, it's been open to one o'clock. So what this, this town, we have an increased. Open to one o'clock. So what this this town did, we have an increased demographics enough to say that we we did a major change in the last two elections that had to be made a change, because we only had about two or three people who did come. I can't even, uh, I I can't remember who they were, but for both uh elections, only two people between seven and eight, and that's why the Board of Supervisors of Elections. It was not a good use of of the time. And as um definition, it's a long day, and then after poll close, we have to count, we have to clean up, we have to do so many things. So we were trying to kind of move that time up so that we didn't get all that.
Thank you.
For sharing that. That makes a big difference.
It does.
Right, so I am going to ask if there's a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash O two election.
Someone's second.
John, will you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin. President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hantit?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
We're going to move on to the Government Relations Term RST, um, and that we looked at at the work session as well. Um. So are there any questions, comments, changes? Are any public comments online or?
I have no comments online.
Sorry.
We have a Commissioner comment.
I thought one of the things we had talked about was introducing um federal advocacy or federal.
You answer? I did too. There was an iteration on it, because there was one with being a um. So let's say adding in federal. So we'll make some decisions like that. I'm definitely not great. No one's standing up in here, so um I'm going to ask if there's a motion to approve the Government Relations Term RST with the addition of federal um advocacy. Is there a second?
I can.
John, will you call the roll, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Hantit, I mean, Commissioner Duckett?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hantit?
Oh, aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hi, we'll move on to Arts Council. It's the Arts Council and events, but it's actually only the Arts Council right now. I don't think we have to need that second meeting, so we can discuss today, so to set their date. Um, so the only thing I'm going to say, I'm going to let Kyle kind of talk about it, but um I did speak with town staff, um, and they are, almost everyone is okay with almost everything, but uh our Department of Public Works would like more information about the November fourth event. Uh, they're asking if we can get more information for the Arts Council before we approve it, so they can determine if they have the capacity to manage that, but and everything else.
Oh, yeah, I think that's feasible, the Arts, because obviously that's the later event, so if the Board even just approved the uh the pop-up on September tenth, uh, the Arts Council has a meeting Monday, so I'll work with them and tell them that one to go, and then we just need to uh, who'd call the area arts experience, and we can bring that back next month.
Is standing up. Is anyone online with their hands up?
No comments.
I should be able to see if there were comments or not. Oh, okay. All right, thank you. So then, is there a motion to approve the um the Arts Council, the Arts Council event on September tenth? Commissioner Lot, is there a second?
A second.
Um, John, you want to call the roll?
President Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Colbert? Mr. Colbert? Mr. Colbert?
John, can you hear us?
I don't hear anyone anymore. Now I hear you. I don't hear Mr. Colbert. Mr. Duckett?
Yes.
Aye.
Commissioner Hantit?
Aye.
Mr. Lot?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
In our town, there's struggles. There is a delay on the video.
There's a delay, there's a delay in every time you all speak. There's a delay. And then there's some times when it cuts out altogether, and I can't hear you.
I'm done. Just so that everyone understands why that keeps happening.
Right.
Okay, we will move on to the opioid settlement participation. Um. And I think I probably have to, have you been getting the same emails I happen to have?
It's been a mix, but I think you have this special.
Sure, okay. So town participated in an opioid settlement two, three years ago, and that just completed. And so when these emails started coming in, I was just forwarding them to the town attorney, thinking this is about that settlement. And like a week or two ago, he was like, hey, this is a whole new settlement, and you need approval from the Board of Commissioners to participate in it. Um, and it is the same group of people that did the first settlement are entering into this second settlement agreement. Um, can you give us, Kyle, an overview of the what the settlement agreements are, that kind of thing? You understand that.
So there's no cost to the town to enter, so a couple municipalities in the county entered it. You um, the state nationwide, and a couple other entities like counties and whatnot, um, on the opioid epidemic, the companies that contributed to it and whatnot. Um, so there was a settlement issued, I think the town getting a couple hundred dollars or something, something crazy. Um, so this is an additional settlement. They came out of the suit with bankruptcy and whatnot. Um, companies were bankrupt over the settlement. I don't know if I can do.
We can use the funds for opioid response, so like basically can purchase the crack pain or whatever that's called, or just do literature, whatever.
I'd like to see that money um added to the list committee, so that maybe we can host um something for the children, so that they can um feel awareness about um, you know, drugs. Uh, along with the uh police department.
Yeah, we we can look at doing an event rather than, I don't think we can add it directly to the events committee because.
Well, I'm just saying, like, a co-host type of thing. We want to have bring the kids, it can be one of the um one of the topics or one of the um things that we do with the children when we plan to do the uh Q and A event.
Oh, we budgeted it. I don't think we've gotten.
We haven't gotten the budget.
Gotten the money yet, but it sounds like we have ways, yeah, it's a good idea. Um, so we have ways to use the money, so do we the question is, do we want to enter this settlement agreement, and do you guys have questions before I turn it over to someone? Okay. All right, we have Joe Rock.
Joe Rock, I will lower my, um, if you're allowed to attribute it to costs that have already been incurred, um, the incidents at the end of Referee Lane back in twenty nineteen were related, they made it in twenty eighteen, but uh Townsend was Police Chief at the time and had to go to a certain house multiple times, and that was because of the problem we found with our oxygen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any um online um comments or questions?
I have no comments online.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to ask if there is a motion to approve our participation in this second settlement agreement. Boomer.
Second it.
John, can you call the roll for us, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert? Commissioner Colbert? Commissioner Duckett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hantit? Commissioner Hantit? Commissioner Hantit?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
I thought my pausing would have helped, so.
I think pausing does help, that was the, but we're done voting for tonight, so we're good, right? John's relieved over there. All right, um. So we'll move on to administrative updates. Do we have any?
Yes, I have an update. Um, I want to say it has truly been a pleasure serving on this board, and um I will be tendering my resignation today, tonight, effective March thirty-first. Um, I really appreciate the residents and them voting for me and putting me in this position, but I honestly feel that I would be best served on the other side of the aisle. So I thank you, the town of Upper Marlboro. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, Jennifer.
As a point of order, you all have to vote to accept the resignation.
I don't accept it.
Are we, are we, like, point of order, administrative functional, like, do we have to take public comment? Do we have to um any, like, how do we have to do it? Can we just have a motion?
You have to do it as a vote. It has to be voted that you accept the resignation.
So is there a motion to accept Commissioner Duckett's resignation? I, she, she, okay, sorry. It feels hard to do a thing like that. Is there a second? Karen's not ready to do it, so I think you have to, or I have to.
But given.
Thank you. Um, all right, can you call the?
Will do. President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Mr. Duckett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hantit?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lot?
Upstaining, John.
Okay.
We're going to take a quick recess.
Urban cutting in, Christchurch Cathedral on Saturday.
Um, we're going to wait, we're going to have a a recess for Commissioner Lot. Sometimes sometimes things happen at these that are emotional and upsetting, and we need to give people. I know I need a minute. Going to close the recess, um, and Kyle, can you just let us know about the event?
Oh, uh, on the Saturday, um, there's a new church opening on Church Street. Right, Cathedral, sorry if I got that wrong, but that's from noon to two o'clock.
And the location is Trinity Church.
Trinity Church.
All right, and we'll move into public comment?
Uh, Joe Rock, I'm all for a fight. Uh, just want to let you all know that the annual Friends of the Library meeting is currently scheduled for uh, May third. I think we said six thirty to eight PM is when we're going to try and get it done, because they now have labor hours.
May third?
May third, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you for all you've done. Really appreciate you serving for us.
Thank you.
I uh, I just wanted to um note that in the meetings, uh, there's a public comment procedure, and it states, you are always welcome to schedule an appointment with the President or Commissioner to discuss the initial problems, quality of life issues, one-on-one, and work towards a satisfactory solution. I've attempted for almost two months now to try to.
I'm going to stop you because I am scheduling.
It has been two months, and it's only through mediation. I cannot speak directly to my President.
On the issue of the historic committee, which you have sent me a number of emails that are inappropriate and out of line, honestly, so we will discuss it in mediation.
Did you just say I lied?
Uh, no, you said I lied, but we're not going to do this right now. I am scheduling a meeting. If you have more comments, go ahead.
Can you tell me when that meeting is, because I've been waiting since the twenty-third of February.
And I asked to schedule it in January, so I am contacting the mediators on a daily basis. If I do not hear from them, I will come up with another.
You have another time? It's been a long time, and it needs to be addressed.
Yes, that's why I asked for it in January, but I was, you weren't ready then, so. Do you have another comment?
Oh, no, no.
I have confidence in my best shot. I want to say. And have been great to meet you. And I hope that in the future, that you will continue to hold like you represent the town. I love you, Tom, and I know you do too. I know this is hard for you. I know you have a reason for it. But I just want to let you know that I feel that you have been on our.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity.
And then I want to ask about Old Mill Road.
Yes.
How's that coming along?
We are looking at pricing out and whether it can be accommodated in the. We are looking at pricing out and whether it can be accommodated in the current budget, price for no snow, or it has to be budgeted in 2024 is tough for you to just do the fix. You'll hear us talking about it on CLEL.
Okay, that sounds. Want to keep, keep open?
It is, it, there are two small road projects in town that have been important to two residents and they are not out of my head at any point. Go ahead, Brian, sorry.
Thank you for your service, Commissioner Duckett. Only imagine how much work and effort is gone by you to try to do the things for the town that you felt we needed to do. And know that I stand here not putting even an ounce of time in compared to what I've seen.
Thank you, sir.
Um, another subject. Um, I'm very interested in any, um, information regarding the old Marlboro Elementary School and the old stone building. Noting that there has been a tax increase for vacant properties, specifically seeking them out in all of these are county buildings. I'm interested in any conversations that have happened with the other county officials. Most recent conversations, anything I can get. I just want to know what is going to happen if the town truly does have a concern, which they assert through this application about vacant property. These are the two most vacant properties I can think of in town for the duration of time.
Could the audience be quiet and respectful as the resident's speaking, please?
Duration of time and for the dilatation and allowing it to fall down.
The, the discussions are ongoing, there will be information, hopefully, um, but I don't have full information at this time to give. I'm working on it. All right.
All right, uh, for the reason you guys, uh, Commissioner Duckett, no one in this room feels that hard that much for you. And I, and I thank you so much for your service and your dedication. You are probably, if I can show the word in person, or.
Thank you.
And, uh, I know what, what you've been through and, and I understand your reasons for it.
Thank you so much.
Can we clone you and get?
We'll work on it.
Good evening, my name's Patricia Sam. I've been the secretary of the stable committees, communities workroom for a while and been part of it for the last four or five years. And I wanted, I know all of you have been very busy and worked very hard. I want to thank Commissioner Duckett, what she's been doing these last several years. And I hope to say active will miss you very much.
John, is anyone online with hands up?
No one online with hands up.
All right, we are going to move on to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. Um, so that the business items on the agenda for next time are an update from Better City, charter review board, discussion, um, meeting regulations, the FY24 budget, the human resources, RFPs, like the, the proposals that come in. We are also going to have to add a special election to that. John and Kyle, you know more about how that gets worded, but.
Yeah.
Are there any changes, additions? We'll move forward with that agenda, obviously, if you have additions, just send them to me and we'll stick them on there. So now, um, we are actually going to, uh, go into closed session as a matter of course in the budget season and my thing to read. So the board of, the town board of commissioners poses to go into closed session on Tuesday, March 28th, following the regular, the March regular town meeting under general provisions, article 3 dash 3051 to discuss the appointment, employment, employment assignment promotion discipline to motion compensation removal resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over the public body as jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. That's the first one, and that's related to discussing personnel matters with regards to FY24 budget. And then we propose to adjourn the closed session without closing it and then reconvene on Wednesday, Wednesday, March 29th at 7:00 P.M. to discuss annexation, um, under article, general provisions, article 3 dash 3057 to consult with council and obtain legal advice. That'd be a person. Um, we're zooming in the attorney so we can do what's your, we can do blended or we can all be virtual. We can, we can figure that out at the end of, we don't have to say if that's virtual or in-person, John, or do we?
What was the question again, rephrase it because I tried to hear you. Sorry.
All right. Do we have to say the location of the closed session that reconvenes tomorrow night, whether it's virtual or?
No, if you guys decide to do virtual, it'll be on the, it'll be in the summary sheet. Once you, I prepare it, it'll say where, where it was. If some of you are in person and we have some people on Zoom, we just need to indicate where the people are coming from.
We just don't need, I'm just asking if I need to read that into the record now, but we don't.
No, no, it can be, as long as it's on the summary sheet, we're okay.
Is there a motion to go into this closed session? Is there a second? John, will you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert? Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
The motion carries, thank you. You're in closed session.
You're now in closed session, we will adjourn for five minutes so that the public can around and they can.